It's six o'clock and I will call this July 25, 2022, the meeting of the Chelmsford Board of Select Board to order. If you could join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic of America, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地， justice for all. First up, we have our public service announcements. Got the cooling center up.
So the first public service announcement is we have cooling centers set up in the town at the senior center in the library. The Chelmsford Main Library at 25 Boston Road is available for cooling center Monday through Thursday, 9:30 to 8:30 p.m., Friday and Saturday from 9:30 to 5:00. And the other centers at the senior center, 75 Groton Road, and that is open Monday to Friday from 8:30 to 4:00. Our next public service announcement is the town of Chelmsford will convene its 2022 fall meeting on Monday, October 17, 2022. Articles to be included on the warrant must be submitted to the office of the town manager at 50 Billerica Road prior to 4:00 p.m. on Monday, August 1. Petition articles must carry the signatures of at least 10 voters. If you want more information, contact the town manager's office at 978-250-5202.
Should that be registered voters? Or is that voters?
Just voters.
Just voters, yeah?
Registered voters, but yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess they can't vote if they're not registered.
Yeah, well, that's still not the right thing to say.
Yeah. Okay, Ken.
The Chelmsford Military Community Covenant Task Force invites the community to attend their military appreciation cookout. And this is to support our local veterans and military for their service and sacrifice. It is Tuesday, August 9, 2022, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Lodge at the Elks Pavilion on 300 Littleton Road here in Chelmsford. It's free to all. They'll have hamburgers, hot dogs, watermelon desserts, soft drinks, and a cash bar. The Mass DOT wants Chelmsford to know there's a public information webinar or Zoom meeting for the replacement of two bridges here in Chelmsford. So they're going to hold a virtual meeting to be hosted by the Mass DOT on the website to present an overview of the following projects. They're going to replace the Gorm Street and the Westford Street 495 bridges. So the design for, I think they pretty much read the same for Gorm Street and for Westford Street is they want to propose two lanes, one in each direction, a shoulder bike lane with buffers and sidewalks on both sides. If you are interested in attending this meeting, I think maybe the best way for someone to find this is to hit our online agenda tonight, there's a link. But if you want, it's kind of a long address, but it's the mass.gov backslash mass dot dash highway dot design, I'm sorry, dash highway dash design dash public dash hearings. Like I said, I think the easiest way for someone to get to this is if they go to our agenda tonight on the town website and click the link. That's on the Mass DOT website also. We have a few notices here from the Department of Health. The first, Department of Health is the First Annual Sober Fest, which will be September 10, 2022, 3 to 8 p.m. Let's Break the Stigma of Mental Illness and Addiction. This will be followed by the visual at dusk for overdose. So just save the date, there'll be more information, I think, coming on this one. And the next one involves, the next two involve the Fall Festival. The first one is again, I guess, another saved to date. It's October 1, 12 to 4 p.m. on the Chelmsford Town Common. They'll have a touch of truck, pumpkin decorating, there'll be plenty of games to play, help get everybody in the autumn spirit at this family-friendly event. And they ask you bring a non-perishable food donation for the Chelmsford Food Pantry, and they'll enter you in a raffle for that donation. And the second part of this is they're looking to attract vendors for this. So to secure a spot for this event as a vendor, you fill out a vendor application. Again, it's on the town, I think it's on the Town Board of Health website, if I looked that up correctly, but for more information, you can reach out to the Board of Health to get information on being a vendor.
And it's not on the flyer, but they're also offering sponsorship levels, so you can contact the Board of Health about that as well.
And the last notice is introducing the new free mental health referral service for Chelmsford residents and employees. It's okay to ask for help. CareSolus will be for providing the mental health care services for the town and again for the employees. Connect to Care today. You can call 888-515-7881 to reach out, or you can go to caresolus.com/chelmsford-ma. There's 24/7 support, multilingual, 365 days a year. They give you care regardless of having insurance or not, and it's easy access to care. And this is a nice self-serve website, so feel free, if you have that need, to reach out. Again, it's free to the town residents and employees of the town.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have public input. Is there anyone in the Zoom room or this room who would like to speak during public input? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to committee vacancies.
Committee vacancies for the week of July 25. The Art and Technology Education Committee has one on expired three-year term. Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one three-year term. Capital Planning Committee has one one-year term. The CCA Advisory Committee has one one-year term. Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee has one three-year term. Commissions on Disabilities has one three-year term. Community Action Program has four one-year terms. Community Preservation Fund has one three-year term. Council on Aging has two three-year terms in five associate member positions. Those are staggered in three-year terms ending each June 30, the next three years. Cultural Council has two unexpired three-year terms and one three-year term. Holiday Decorating Committee has two one-year terms. The Parade Committee, all applicants are welcome, those are one-year terms, they expire each July 31. Permit Building Committee has one three-year term. Public Record Advisory Committee, one one-year term. Recycling Committee has one one-year term. And the Vinyl Square Action Strategic Action Plan Committee has one one-year term. If you're interested in serving on a Town Board or Committee, please complete an online application available at the town website, or you can contact the town manager's office here at 50 Billerica Road, or you can reach out to the town manager at tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov. Again, that's tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov and 978-250-5202 if you prefer to call the town manager's office direct.
Thank you, Ken. So next up, we have a public hearing for the change of location and transfer of license for Chelmsford Wine and Spirits.
Good evening, David Keel, on behalf of V. Sosnoen, the applicant. First off, I'd like, Manager Cohen, I'd like to thank Christina Bruce for the outstanding assistance that she gave us on this, filling out this application is quite a process, and she's quite a town employee, helped us all the way. Before I get into the actual application itself, I'd just like to briefly update you. This is the only board that we haven't appeared personally. We've been in before the planning board and the Conservation Commission. We are going to be developing 133 Princeton Street. It will become Chelmsford Wine and Spirits. We're going to be tearing down a very blighted building, which is an eyesore, and we're going to be putting in what we hope to be as a wonderful building for the town of Chelmsford and its residents. We've received tremendous support. We went through the planning board with just two sessions. We went through the Conservation Commission with just one session, and we are literally at the final planting stage of all this, so we're here administratively. Right now, all we're waiting for is the Department of Transportation to sign off on what are called the curb cuts. There's simply delays there because no one really is back in their office yet, and it just takes a little while to get those types of things done. But our engineer has assured us that that's just a matter of, you know, getting that through. So essentially, what we have to do now is the license which we have is owned by Mr. Nuen, who's up the street at 11 Vinyl Square. So administratively, one, we have to apply to transfer that Lurka license from 11 Vinyl Square to 133 Princeton. As I'm sure that the residents of the town of Chelmsford know, that's approximately a quarter of a mile. Nothing significant there. In addition, also administratively, he owns the license as an individual. We will be transferring the license to Canissa Incorporated, and that is also procedural as Mr. Nuen is the president, the vice president, the treasurer, and the secretary, and the exclusive shareholder of the corporation. With your approval and with the hearing process, that would then go before the ABCC. The expectation is that so long as there aren't any changes in ownership, matter of fact, they were the ones that properly advised us that as long as the corporation is reflective and controlled by Mr. Nuen, they don't anticipate at all having any problems with that. In addition, oh, so with that transfer, we would have just one issue that we would like to discuss with the board. It's going to be a large project. We expect that, we've had actually great public support. With the project in of itself, Mr. Nuen is going to be closing his current store. Therefore, we would have what's called a pocket license. We have contacted the ABCC with respect to whether or not there'd be any concerns about a pocket license. They said that was beyond their purview, that was purely at the board, and that was at a local town level. Mr. Nuen is going to be dedicating all of his time to the development of the project. So essentially, the pocket license would go from 11 to 133, and he would have it in his pocket at the facility while he's building the property. I discussed this with Paul. I don't know if this is something that requires a formal vote, but we just before we closed down the store at 11 Vinyl and dedicate our time to 133 Princeton, we just wanted to make sure that there were potentially no concerns with the board.
So what kind of timeframe are you looking for, like months or?
No, no, we anticipate, once everything is approved, we will have our demolition application in immediately. We do know that there's a new building inspector now, and he's backed up because there were some vacancies. We anticipate that the project itself, our architects are telling us about nine months to build it out.
I see.
And we're also being advised that the steel issues and the shortages, those are starting to minimize a little bit, and we're not getting the, we're not getting the construction delays as a result of materials. Yes, sir.
Will you be closed the whole nine months? Are you, you're not going to close until you start?
No, we're actually, once we get the license, once we get everything approved and everything is signed off on, we at that point plan on giving notice to our landlord, letting him know that we're going to be closing. And again, Paul, we discussed, I'm not sure if this is a formal vote issue or?
You know, as noted, the ABCC sort of has no formal policy or prescriptions on this. In looking, the records that we have, we don't have a precedent in Chelmsford of this happening. The issue of pocket licenses in a macro issue is communities often get concerned that a license is issued and then it's not utilized, and therefore, especially where licenses are limited. I mean, it's up to the board. You can either say, you know, vote to, you know, to acknowledge the gap in terms of the active license or not. I don't, you know, the license is going to expire annually anyway, so you'll be revisiting this in months. So depending upon how the schedule goes, you know, it doesn't foreclose the board's opportunity in the future if something were to arise to not renew the license or at a later date rescind the license. So again, it's really whatever the board's preference is.
And also, we fully expect that you will be witnessing the construction at that stage of the year.
Trying to think of it as, from a business side of it, I mean, if the town says no to a pocket license, I assume he just doesn't open. You know what I mean? He just pays his rent, and he's out his rent money and just, I don't.
With any, we have to go through and start everything over again.
Right. He closes down for even a day?
I don't know.
No, not for a day, but for an extended period. I mean, you know, then the license would be seen as inactive.
Right. But I think it's in our benefit to at least allow the pocket, because, so let go the other way, he just runs his stock down while he doesn't fill his shelves up while he's, that doesn't benefit anybody either.
But in essence, what is, was noted, what they're going to do is they're going to close the establishment and not operate under a license for a prolonged period, as opposed to what the thought was, is well, you keep the other location ready, and then you, hey, you cut over on a weekend or whatever, but they're going a different route.
And could I add another benefit to that? Our landlord is a Chelmsford resident, and it also gives him the opportunity during this period of time to re-rent out his store. So it's a win-win.
I mean, it doesn't create a hardship for the town because you have an additional license that you're not issuing anyway, so it's not as though you're foreclosing an opportunity to another, so I think you're fine.
And to Paul's point, if something goes unexpectedly, we have December, we can not renew it.
Exactly.
If your project goes belly up or whatever, we just, we hope that doesn't happen, but...
Well, no, we are very happy to inform you that it appears that...
And you've been through all the planning board approvals already?
Everything, absolutely. We have been incredibly well-received, and in addition, we had a butter showing up that we didn't even know in support of tearing down this blighted building. So we are very happy. We are really hoping that this is almost going to be a destination building for people with excellent wines and, you know, excellent tasting opportunities for people. We really believe that we have the opportunity to make something special here, and we're looking forward to being, and also, one of the things I want to add, Mr. Nuen is a Chelmsford resident. He's, what, are you about two miles, I think, V? He's probably about two miles from this project, so he is very, very vested in this particular endeavor.
Well, the building's been on ice off for about 20 years, so I think it's good for the town.
It's great for the town.
Good luck.
Yeah, I guess I'd be okay with it as long as the license you plan on renewing the license at the end of the year, even though you might not be opening until sometime next year.
Again, the only delay would be construction materials, of which our builder is telling us that that is starting to minimize a little bit, that it's not as bad as it was.
To clarify, I think what Pat's saying is at the end of the calendar year, our licenses expire, and we have to vote to renew them. And so you're saying as long as your intent is to renew in December, even though you don't have the building built yet?
100%.
Yeah. Is that, was that your question?
Yes, that's my question.
100%, Pat, we will be here renewing that license, correct.
Okay, and I mean, I guess at that point, we can see what the status is to, you know, if it's going to be six months or another nine months, so yeah.
So maybe if we get to that point, you give us an update at the end of the year.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public? I'm not seeing any here or in the Zoom room.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
This is one where we have to continue for two weeks.
We do the two-week continuation. All right, so I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to our next, is that, are we meeting next week?
August 8. August 8.
August 8.
Second.
August 1 is a work session. Okay, all those in favor?
Right.
Hi, 5-0.
Thank you for your time and thank you for your support.
Yep, we'll see you in two weeks.
You got it.
Okay, next up, we have the Select Board License Approval Process, and Christina Bruce is in the Zoom room. If we could bring her up on the screen, that would be great. Christina, would you like to introduce this, or do you want me to?
Sure, sure. Yes, so I am seeking just clarification on Select Board Policy Section 3-2 on whether this would apply to just new licenses or a transfer of a license from one entity to another, and then also just clarification on the application of the following Section 3-3. We, there are, there are a number of amendment transactions that do trigger the requirement of a public hearing that are not a new license or a transfer of the license. And I just want to clarify whether any of those would be continued per this policy or if we're just talking about new and transfer licenses.
So if I could add to that, we have had recently instances where we've had, if you look at like the boxes on the, that she checked off on the ABCC license, we've had instances where we have had those things occur, where we have to have a public hearing, but then we keep the public hearing open for two weeks. And the only policy requirement we have to keep the public hearing open for two weeks is when it's a new license or a transfer of license. So from a policy perspective, we made a mistake, and the question is, is the policy good as it's written, or does someone want to challenge and change that policy?
Also, if I could add, the policy's title is approval of new or transferred alcohol beverage licenses, but the language within the policy says with respect to its consideration for approval of any application filed with the board for the issuance of a new or transfer of ownership of an existing alcohol beverage license. And I think that's where some of the confusion comes in. There is no transaction called transfer of ownership. There are a lot of amendments that do change some of the ownership interest, you know, transfer of stock would be one of those, but that isn't a transfer of the license. So I think that's where some of the confusion is coming in.
And I think where, I had some confusion too, is on 3-3, it says, prior to amendment of any condition or restriction, the petitioner shall notify a butters in the same manner required for the original application. My understanding was, I guess the way I interpreted it was that anything that required a public hearing should be subject to that one meeting delay. That's not what it says, I understand now that's not exactly what it says.
Can you, Pat, can you clarify, what is the conclusion you're drawing from 3-3? From what language?
It says, the petitioner shall notify the butters in the same manner as required for an original application of license. So in other words, an amendment that requires a public hearing has to be notified the same way, has to be notified of the butters the same way. So my interpretation was that that since it's a public hearing, that we would follow the same process for a public hearing and keep that public hearing open for an additional meeting. I mean, we always have the option to waive it.
Where does notification of a butters tie into a policy on a two-week public hearing? I don't understand that.
Well, just because if you have a public hearing, you have to notify butters.
Okay, whether it's one week or two weeks?
Correct, that's my understanding.
May I interject for just a moment?
And we do that, don't we?
So the requirement by the ABCC to hold a public hearing is not always tied to a butter notification. So a transfer of a license requires a public hearing, it does not require a butter notification. The transaction that was just before you only required a butter notification because they were transferring the location. So there are instances where there is a public hearing requirement and there is no butter notification.
Although I guess that's what 3-3 says, is that we want the butters to be notified if there's going to be a public hearing.
So 3-3 is referring to amendments to a condition on a license. My understanding was that a condition placed or a restriction placed on a license is outside of the normal parameters of a license, and would be something placed by the board specifically to address a board or a resident concern or a violation by the licensee, for instance, requiring a police detail on weekend nights, that sort of thing.
And Christina, change of condition or restriction is not in your checklist, in the checklist for the ABCC?
No, no, I think that's referring to...
So that is for a local discretion on a change of condition or restriction? We would require, we would require a butter notice?
That's my interpretation.
And it's tied to, and that paragraph is tied to condition or restriction?
Which would make sense, because oftentimes, I think, a condition or a restriction would be placed to address any butters' concern.
I don't know, I guess we'll go around. I don't see any need to change the policy, I think we just need to sharpen our practice. But I think the policy is clear, unless we just need to take, in paragraph 2 of 3-2, where the sentence language is not consistent with the ABCC or the title, and it says transfer of ownership, if we need to just start, are you, were you suggesting we strike of ownership and just say transfer?
Yes.
And that way, however ABCC changes and evolves, we evolve with it. So I mean, I would be okay with that one change, but Mark, your thoughts?
Yeah, that's fine.
So that means, okay, so that the one we just had, it would be subject to the two-week wait?
Yes.
What else would be under that?
Only a brand-new license or a transfer of the license?
Location transfer, right.
No, not a location transfer.
Oh, not a location?
See, I think that a location transfer should, I mean, this one is only a quarter mile, but what if they're moving it six or seven, they're moving to the other side of town? Then I definitely think we need to have, especially since the butter notification is actually less than what, the requirement is less than what I thought, it's only actual, you know, direct the butters.
Does the, would a change of location be a condition or restriction that would trigger the other one?
That's what I was thinking.
Right, from the ABCC's perspective, it's who owns it, they don't care where they're located?
So the ABCC is, anything that you see listed on that monetary transmittal form, those are all transactions that are approved locally and then go before the ABCC. A condition placed on the license by the Select Board, we would just inform the ABCC? That's not something that they have a say in. So any of these transactions that you see on this list here have to be approved locally and then by the ABCC.
Change of location does require a public hearing, Pat?
That's what I thought.
It's just that...
Right, it requires a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
So it just wouldn't necessarily mean we have to hold the hearing open for two weeks, but it does require a public hearing?
Right, if it's changed in place, it's different.
Okay, I guess, I guess my issue would be, I would rather we err on the side of holding the hearing open, open, the public hearing open, rather than automatically closing it. You know, I mean, we can always extend it too, I mean, there's no, there's no regulation that says we can't, you know, continue a public hearing even if our policy says that it's only, you know, we can approve it immediately.
If the policy doesn't require you to hold it open for two meetings or more, we still have the discretion to do that, depending on the situation.
Right.
I think what we're getting into is we've been holding hearings open for two weeks when it, I mean, it's probably not necessary, and the applicant can't complete their process with the ABCC until we close our end locally. And I, you know, that's why, so I don't feel like if we, if we limit the policy saying that we're required to have a public hearing for two weeks to approval of a new or transferred license, that doesn't mean that we don't have the discretion to continue a public hearing if we think we need to. We could continue it for four weeks if we need to. I mean, the planning board does that, right? They don't, I think that's the discretion of this board, depending on the situation. I'm concerned about getting ourselves tied into, everyone has to be extended for two weeks, and then we get into where we were before, where everybody's coming up asking for a waiver because we really don't need it for two weeks on everything. George, Ken?
Well, I always try to just think of the business, and if, when you see these permits come in, and if it's same location, selling the same stuff with a reputable new owner, I always think, well, if we're going to put things on hold, and they're going to be at financial hardship because we shut them down for two weeks, or it slows them down by two weeks, I'd rather not put a two-week on it, but like tonight, I mean, he's shutting down, he's going to be opening nine months, we could delay it nine months, you know? So that's the way I always weigh these out, is how much hardship are we putting on the As long as they're good reputable people with clean backgrounds, not waving off on...
Well, even if you think somebody's reputable, I think if it's a new owner, that the... Well, even if you think somebody's reputable, I think if it's a new owner, that the public should have an opportunity once they find out about it, because a lot of times they don't find out about it till they see us talking about it.
Well, the ABC does a pretty good investigation, don't they?
I wasn't around when this policy was written, but I could, I can see why it says for new or transferred, you would want two weeks because, like Pat said, sometimes the first meeting is when the public even knows that something's happening and if it's new or being transferred to a different owner, I honestly don't have a problem as long as it's known and Christina notifies them as part of the process. But I think for some of these other things where you have existing licenses and we've been holding, you know, it's something that's Xed out on the ABC list that Christina provided, I think we've been, that's overkill. I think we have the discretion to extend it if we want, but we shouldn't put a policy requirement on ourselves for the two weeks.
Right. Because like in this last case, if he wasn't moving, all he was doing was transferring the license kind of to a corporate entity of which he's everything. So in that case, you'd never want to do it two weeks because he's been in business for a while and why would you do that? But moving, maybe you do. I don't know.
But it just goes back to what Pat originally said. It was always, it wasn't a written policy. It was always sort of our?
Interpretation.
Agreement that we waited two weeks.
No, it's in the policy, Ken.
So you want it?
It's here.
But it says we can waive. The board may waive this policy.
What I think we're saying is we have overextended our application of the policy to things that the policy doesn't apply to the way it's written. And I don't feel there's a policy change needed. I think if it doesn't, if it's not new or transferred and we only want to have a public hearing for one week, fine. That's my feeling. I think if we want it for longer than that, we have the discretion to do that.
Maybe we should have the attorney just review it, just give us their opinion. Then we, if we're doing something wrong, that we don't have any liability. I don't, just food for thought.
We can do that. I'd like, I think I'd like to leave this discussion with what is our intent so that it's clear to Christina, because she's dealing with the applicants. And in the cases where we've overextended beyond this policy, I think what's happened is the applicants weren't notified that they were going to have a two-week period because it wasn't required by the policy, but we did it. And so it's, I think it's important for our relationship with the businesses so that Christina can be clear on exactly how the board's interpreting this policy.
So is the suggested way to fix this is just crossing out ownership? Or is it rewriting of the whole policy?
I guess if you guys want me to try to fill that, I will, but jump in if I'm not saying it properly. There is a fix that's recommended, that I would recommend after this discussion to cross-strike of ownership so that we're consistent with the title and the ABCC language and that it's an absolute transfer of a license, right? But the main discussion here is whether we want a policy change that says if it's not a new or transferred license, we want a policy, the policy to say that we hold it open for two consecutive meetings. Personally, I'm opposed to that. I think the policy is fine as written with that one clarification.
I think I'd agree with that.
Maybe I'm interpreting what you're saying incorrectly, but how does that help Christina be able to tell the applicant? So they can tell the applicant that by policy, there is no waiting period, but what if there are circumstances, the board decides that there is a waiting period? So then?
So I?
Do you know what I mean? The flip side of that? That's what I was concerned about.
So she, then where it's clear that it's a new or transferred, she can state, as she did in this letter to the applicant, that it's the board's policy to hold the public hearing open for two meetings. And if it's something other than that, my suggestion would be that she can tell the applicant, here's the date of the public hearing, and, you know, what happens is at the discretion of the board. Or we can help her with that language.
As long as it's that wording, as long as it's not?
So you don't, you're worried about setting an expectation that by policy, it's one meeting, one and done?
Too short. Exactly.
Yeah. Are you okay with that, Christina? If there's some kind of language that just says your public hearing will open on this date, enclosure is at the discretion of the board?
Sure, we can do that. I mean, we don't have a specific policy in place for continuing other types of public hearings, like a full petition, but when there is a specific concern, the board will continue it if a resident has an issue or if there are questions that, you know, the applicant can't answer. So that's always been the case. I think Pat mentioned that earlier, that the board has it at its discretion to continue any public hearing. So I can always just let an applicant know that that's always the case. I think that might create a little bit of confusion as well. The timeline is rather long for an alcohol license, new or an amendment, it can be up to three months. And sometimes approvals, they can't get their financing or they can't finalize their lease until they've got all their approvals. So they are often quite anxious about what that timeline is going to be. So if there was some, if there was some particular concern that the board were to bring up to the applicant, then of course they have to accept that if there's going to be a continuation of anything other than a new or a transferred license. But if I were to start saying it's going to open and then it's going to close when the board is ready for it to close, I think that might create even more anxiety.
Well, but you can't make promises. I mean, that's the thing, you know?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm worried about.
No. And I never do make a promise, just this is when your public hearing is.
Right.
That's it, you know? But I do, when I know that it is, this policy is going to apply, I do make sure that I let them know so that they can expect it to be two meetings.
In other public hearings, we've had non-liquor licenses or ones that any other board or committee does. We don't, we just say your public hearing date is this date, and then whatever happens at that date happens. So I don't know why we couldn't just do the same thing like she's been doing, now that I think about it. Let's go around again. Mark?
Yeah, again, I'm just, I just don't want any expectation to be less than what the board may want to invoke for whatever reasons, that's all. So to me, it should be by the next meeting unless, will typically be reviewed by the next meeting unless there are some kind of extenuating circumstances. But that would be the convention, that it would be done in that timeframe.
Okay.
Can be waived, but, you know.
George, how do you feel about the general way this discussion's going?
Yeah, I think, I agree with you.
You okay with that? Ken?
I'm fine with the suggested change.
Pat?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Do we want to waive our policy of having policy changes open for two weeks and just vote on this policy, striking of ownership?
That's an awful lot of?
A doo-loo.
I think it would be helpful. I'm okay with it.
All right. So you want a motion to amend section 3-2, strike the word of ownership in paragraph two?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Christina, do you have what you need?
Yes, for 3-2. And then for 3-3, reviewing conditions, I just want to make sure that the board's understanding and my understanding are the same on that, that that does not apply to normal transactions that go before the board and then the ABCC, but that only applies to local?
Conditions.
Local conditions.
Local conditions that are outside of the normal license parameters. So this 3-3 would not have applied to a transfer of stock or any other, you know, change of manager or any other type of normal parameter of a license.
It wouldn't be worth putting local in there, would it?
We could.
Local condition or restriction?
We've gone wild with one policy change.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Would it always be just a local condition?
Well, it distinguishes it from ABCC, I think.
Right. Which is what the paragraph intent was for.
Yeah.
Right.
Because as she said, in some of the conditions for ABCC, we don't notify abutters. This is just about notifying abutters.
Okay, that's fine.
So we leave it as is?
Yeah.
No, we're going to add the word local.
Where you want to add that?
I think that's what we said, right? Is that what you meant by that's fine, Pat?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So you want an amendment to?
Further clarify, yeah.
Amendment to add the word local under section 3-3. So we'll read prior to the amendment of any local condition or restriction placed on an other. That's where you want it? So I'll make a motion to add the word local prior to the word condition in section 3-3?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Will that also be on the title?
Okay, so I will make a motion to amend section 3-3 so that the title, we petitions to review local conditions placed in alcohol beverage licenses and to add the word local in between any and the word condition in the first paragraph.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. You all said, Christina?
Yes, thank you. I can make those changes in the policy, if I have a call.
Thank you.
Then the other item in the memo were just things for the board to consider going forward with alcohol licensing and its process and approvals. We have internally worked on changing our process a bit to streamline the departmental review. Previously, we had what was titled the departmental sign-off sheet that sometimes caused a lot of delays well before an application made it to the select board because some department had felt uncomfortable signing, it felt like a final approval from their department, when sometimes some of what they're going to eventually need wasn't met, for instance, sprinkler inspections or submission of a food plan to the Board of Health. But those aren't necessarily things that need to delay bringing the applicant before the select board. Given that the process can be, as I said earlier, up to three months, there's plenty of time for them to address some of those issues with those other departments. So in order to streamline, make the process easier for the applicants and shorten the overall timeline, we switched to a departmental comment sheet, which you now see, a review sheet. So now those folks can just let the board know, here's where they are with our department. That also lets the applicant know, starts the conversation between those other departments and the applicant. So when the board sees those comments, you know, take it for what that is. It's not always something that should interfere with the board's approval. Many of those departments have independent authority, even if the select board and the ABCC approved a license and our office issued the license, if there was some code violation, the fire department has independent authority to close them down or prevent them from opening to the public, as does the building department and the health department. But if you saw a comment, for instance, you know, this is, this is not zoned for that type of business, well, then that would be something I think the board would want to hold off on approval if it wasn't, if it met some, if it had some sort of big issue like that. So I just wanted to point that out. As well as I've started over the last year or so, including a checklist of what are the requirements for supporting documents and the process with each different type of transaction that goes before the board. And that's just for your information because not everything that is submitted by the applicant goes into the packet. You know, I don't put, there, sometimes there are bank statements or copies of ID, things like that, a query form that has lots of personal information. I don't put that in, but I did want the board to know, these are the requirements, yes or no they've been met or not. But I divide those into sections. This is what the ABCC requires if it's an alcohol license. This is additional, these are additional items the town requires. But then there's a last section, you know, things that are required prior to issuance. So state law says that the board can't issue or renew any license without proof of workers' comp insurance, tax compliance affidavit, things like that. Payment on their license fee, you know, we don't ask them to pay for their fee prior to approval, because sometimes it goes from one year to another in that process of approval. So all of those things, I put it there just to let you know that those are things that we've either got already or they're pending. But I wouldn't issue the license after ABCC approval until we have all those things. And then the last point, I just wanted to note that while we do query checks on other types of licenses, we don't do them for alcohol licenses because the ABCC does them. If the board were to make an adverse decision based on the information obtained in a query, then that would trigger other sorts of regulations and processes, notification to the applicant and appeal process and other things. So we let the ABCC bear that burden.
Any questions for Christina?
Well, that's good explanation for everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Paul, we have reports and presentations.
Yes, DPW Director Christine Clancy has joined us this evening. She's going to provide the monthly traffic safety committee report.
Hi, Christine. Good evening. So under current actions, the traffic committee met recently in the past month, and the first item is Ledge Road and looking at the speed bumps along Ledge Road. So currently, there are three speed bumps, temporary rubber speed bumps, and we were looking to add a fourth location as close as possible to the town right of way near the Newport plant entrance. We did locate that area. It is right near, there's a house, I guess, there's a house, the last house before the entrance. So we found that location and we are recommending to maybe place an asphalt speed bump as opposed to a rubber one. In talking with our highway department, we do take the rubber ones out each season. When we do take them out, they often need to be replaced again in the spring. It's not like we can reuse that material. We do believe we can provide an asphalt speed bump to still have the same effectiveness. It will be a little longer than the current rubber ones, but hopefully have that same effectiveness as far as having slow traffic, I think around five to 10 miles an hour. So that's something that we are hoping to do in the next month. We also, because, so this speed bump will be a permanent speed bump through the winter. We will put a sign just so, you know, people are aware that this is a speed bump through the winter. And really, we want to measure to see how it holds up over the winter. We did talk with our highway department and given the layout of the speed bump, we do think that the plows will be able to get over it. The current rubber ones, those are temporary, those really, you know, are meant to be only temporary and not something that is out in the winter.
So Christine, if the plows do okay with the paved, the pavement speed bump, then you would consider doing that with all of them?
So that is a consideration. We want to look at how this one speed bump holds up this winter and then potentially put back all asphalt speed bumps next spring. It's something that we want to see how the speed bump holds up, how the plows handle it, and then we would probably propose, if all goes well, to put back asphalt next spring for all locations.
Is there like a guide to speed bumps that talks about height and width and?
There, so there isn't like a speed bump manual. There's a lot of literature out there as far as what is recommended. I think different states have different recommendations. So when we were, and we looked, like I said, there isn't, you just don't go to Mastiote and say, this is like your speed bump details. I think there are different applications. And so when we were looking, we did find some references that typically speed bumps are no more than four inches high. When you get over four inches high, that's when they become more impactful to the equipment, the vehicles. So this one, we're proposing potentially three and a half, four inches high, but we want to have a longer width, about eight to 10 feet. And so in some speed bumps, some literature is recommending up to 14, 16 feet long. So this pilot, we were thinking closer to eight to 10 feet and then potentially three and a half, four inches tall. And that's something we could also tweak in the spring. And that's something we could also tweak in the spring if we find that it wasn't as effective. Do we shorten it? Do we heighten it a little more? But most literature does recommend more than four inches.
That's a good answer. Thank you.
The next item is the, is the Chelmsford Center for the Arts at Town Common. There was, at the recent listening session, there was a request to add a crosswalk directly across from that location to Town Common. And I know this was looked at before. The Traffic Committee has been looking, looked again at this request for, to add that crosswalk. And that would be considered a mid-block crosswalk, because you have the, closely have the intersection with Littleton Road, and you also have some previous intersections before that. And so really, a mid-block crosswalk would not be recommended at this location, just given the traffic volume on, on North Road. And, and also the proximity to the traffic signals. But there is a potential, just to look at how we could incorporate a crossing at the intersection with Littleton Road. So this is listed as a current action, because it's something that the Traffic Committee will continue to explore, to see if there's any opportunities to look at how we could potentially incorporate a crosswalk at Littleton Road. That will take, you know, there will have to be some funding opportunities to look at that, because I think we also will have to look at the overall traffic signals at the intersection and the timing. But that is something that we will continue to look at. The next item is the Mill Road at Raymond Road crosswalk proposal. And this was a recent proposal through the Shared Streets and Space Grant Program. We did receive a response from Mass D O T. I think we updated the board last month. We were denied. And we did wanna have a debrief with Mass D O T, just to understand that the review process and why our application was denied. So we, I think last week or the week before, we met with Mass D O T. They did say that the grant was very competitive, but they did have some concerns with our application from a technical point of view, in that the, we were proposing a rapid flashing beacon, a rapid flashing crosswalk. And with that crosswalk, there are some sight distance concerns. On the west, you have a potential vertical sight distance, and then on the east, on Mill Road, you have a horizontal sight distance. And so when there are sight distance concerns, putting a rapid flashing beacon might not be the best traffic calming approach, or a way to really say this is, you know, that ultimately says this is a safe crossing. But if there's sight, sight distance issues, those really should be addressed before you create that crosswalk. So they recommended that we look at other traffic calming opportunities, potentially some medians at each approach. If there's any other ways to address the sight distances. So that will be something that D P W in the Traffic Committee will look at, to see if there's another traffic calming measure that could be implemented and be able to install a crosswalk. The last item under current action, action items, is the recent NIMCO truck traffic study. So, right now, the Traffic Committee is reviewing alternatives to understand if there's any ways for a truck to, alternatives to the current truck traffic that is traveling down Swain Road. Are there any questions on current actions before I move on to pending?
So-
Go ahead.
On the Swain Road, are we gonna get like an update in another month with the results of the different options you looked at and a discussion on where that's heading? Where do you think that's gonna play out to?
So the Traffic Committee, I mean, I think we will have some, right now, we are looking at what options exist. There are, I guess we will be presenting something in the next month with an update. We're working through those right now.
So Paul, this was before Christina came on board.
Yep.
When, the reason I had asked about this is Chief Spinney had brought it forward, saying that there may be a possibility of doing a truck exclusion, because there are alternate routes, but they needed the data. So is that?
So that we now have the data and they're, the Police Department and D P W, and in fact, with the Fire Department as well, are out there investigating what the alternative routes would be. The most obvious one is Dunstable Road, but the problem with Dunstable Road, with an exclusion on Swain Road, is trying to make that right turn from Dunstable Road onto Groton Road. And so, I expect it will come in next month, and, because we have some preliminary materials, but we wanna do it thoroughly and completely, that video and show demonstrate the challenges and the alternatives. So we, as I said, we expect to be back here next month with the final report on that option.
Did you say Dunstable Road or Groton Road?
No, if you try to take turn from Dunstable Road onto Groton Road.
Why would they need to?
Well, 'cause if you're excluding vehicles from Swain Road, you've got to-
Get to Route 3?
You've gotta find alternative routes.
But what Chief had said before was, they can just go down to Drum Hill and get on Route 3. They don't have to turn right.
Well, that's, those are, again, those are the options that we're looking at. We don't know if that, if sending them out to Drum Hill is an acceptable, allowable exclusion route that will be accepted by Mass Dot.
Who decides that? The state?
Mass Dot. To put a truck exclusion in, we need Mass Dot approval. And one of the, one of the criteria is distance, and that was the issue that we had with Golden Cove Road, of trying to make an alternative route that would have put them through another route, and they said, "No, that's too far away." So that's, again, so we're looking at, can you go right onto Dunst, from Dunstable onto Groton Road, or could you send them out to Drum Hill? And those are, those are the options that we're looking at.
You go all the way down Dunstable Road through the square and out?
Yeah. The question is, is that an acceptable by Mass Dot truck exclusion route? Or is it too long? That's, we don't know.
Could you do something where on the way in, they have to go down and take a left, but on the way out, they can take a right and come down Swain? Like, you just make it a one-way truck exclusion?
You mean a one-way truck exclusion? We can, we can look into that to see if that's possible. I don't know.
Say that again, Ken?
Still like the left-hand turn.
Coming out, they can take a right on Swain, but going in, they can't take a left on Swain? Because they can make the turn at Triangle, but they can't make the right coming out at Triangle. It's just too tight. So it's a one-way truck extension on Swain? Truck exclusion? If that's, if the result is you can't do it because of that?
And I guess, I guess I'm, the reason I was feeling confused is I thought the reason for the truck exclusion was to send them down what's mostly an industrial, commercial route to Drum Hill, not to send them back up to Groton Road that already has truck issues.
Right. Well, what I'm saying is, if the Mass D O T comes back and says, "It's too far, no go."
Yeah.
Is our second option is to send half of the trucks down, have them take a left onto Dunstable, instead of taking a left on Swain, but the ones coming out of the quarry can take a right on Swain, come up and get a right on. At least we get half the pie.
That's an option.
Yeah.
But I would rather get denied by Mass D O T first before we-
Right, well, and all, and all I was saying is, I didn't think maneuvering that right turn was even under consideration, because the whole purpose of the truck exclusion was to see if we could send them to Drum Hill.
Right, but we're just trying to cover every possible alternative.
I understand, but I just wanted to-
How you can avoid Swain Road, but thank you.
Okay.
Now, if D O T comes back and says, "Too far," then we're looking at this other option.
Okay.
I agree with your comments.
Okay.
Main Street, because if you can't take a right turn, you gotta make a left turn, and those that wanna go to Westford, they have to come down to the Triangle and go up Main Street. I mean, is there?
To do an exclusion on Main Street?
Not an exclusion. Well, I don't know. I mean, some, some, I mean, we get a lot of complaints about Main Street.
Yeah.
They come down, we come down, you know, they can't go out, if they wanna go to Westford or, on that area. They can't make a right-hand turn. It's illegal now, right? If they agreed to it, and they agree, that's the problem. So, they have to come left. The only way is to go to the Triangle and make a U-
A right onto Main Street.
A U-turn.
Right.
So they're all coming that way.
I mean, I don't know if they, the heat made it blatant, but I know this weekend, I was driving around all up there trying to check. You look at the ground and just look at the tire wear marks. I mean, they were going into that little dirt pad, they were coming left out of there, going in the dirt patch, turning around, and heading back to Westford. I mean, you can see-
Yeah, they do that all the time.
Everywhere, the different, but they put cones up to block it this, recently. I don't know what they, they're still there. But you can see the truck patterns, even Main Street, the amount of volume going down Main Street must be crazy, because the ground, the pavement's black.
And they're still dropping asphalt all over the ramp onto Groton Road.
On the way back, though.
But it's, but it's the state portion, no, on the way in.
They're coming down the ramp, or going up.
They're coming into the asphalt plant, so you can see on the ramp that goes onto Route 40.
Right.
They keep dumping, they keep losing asphalt.
Which is weird, because they're coming back to get more.
But that's a state road, so the state has to take care of it. It's, it's state property there.
So we'll have an update next month on that. Under pending actions, the bottleneck reduction competitive grant, so we are, we received an email that we, you know, likely, we are the recipient of the Golden Cove, Billerica Road submission, but we are waiting for that final paperwork that will also include the scope of work. So we should be receiving that really any time soon. So that's right now being finalized by Mass D O T, and we're just waiting for that, that final scope and final award. We also recently submitted the bottleneck reduction competitive grant for the intersection of Richardson Road and Princeton Street, so we're just awaiting on feed, our confirmation if that was something that would be accepted or denied. So that was just submitted, so my, we don't have a timeline yet for that.
That was just submitted to D O T?
Yes, that was submitted just the end of June to Mass D O T. So, we're still waiting to hear back, I guess, from the last submission, and this was just this year's submission that we, we just provided. Then, under completed actions, we have, I know there was a request to look at the traffic around the center, especially the location of stop signs and one-way signs. Potentially, there was some confusion about the, how people traveled around the center, around the library. The Traffic Committee looked at this. I went out too, myself, and looked at it. I am very familiar with the area, but I went and looked at all the approaches. There is adequate signage at many of the approaches, one-way. In particular, three of the approaches that I think I, I thought might be potential concerns is one, if you're coming out of Center Street, or sorry, Summer Street, and there is one-way signage, so you know you can only take a right out of Summer Street, there's a "do not, do not enter" sign. Another location was if you're exiting the, the complex, you know, C V S and the restaurants, and there is one-way signage there as well, so you know that you're, the only way to turn is, is a right out of, out of that plaza. The only location that I thought might be able to add some signage is the library. When you're exiting the library, there wasn't a one-way sign across the street, just to say, one-way towards, towards the center. So, D P W will be installing another one-way sign on that, so it's closer to Max and Leo's, between Max and Leo's and C V S, we would be installing a one-way sign. And that should hopefully clarify, and that was the only confusion that we could find. I mean, it wasn't really confused, it was just maybe we could add some clarity to the intersection. We did not find anything else that seemed to be missing signage, so we see this as a completed action item once, you know, D P W installs this one sign.
And are you gonna put that across the street?
Yes, yeah.
As opposed to like right at the, right where they come out?
We, I, I can double-check, see if there is signage. I guess, I know across the street, there isn't signage, so I think we should at least put something across the street. I can double-check to see if we have to put something. I thought there might be an arrow sign, like "left only." I will double-check that, but I know there isn't a one-way sign across from the, the library. And I think that is helpful, because when you're exiting, sometimes you've passed that sign, and you wanna see, you know, that one-way is, is helpful, so you know which, you know, it is a one-way direction around the center. Any questions?
No, thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
You.
Great, thank you. And then, our other report is by our Chief Assessor Frank Green. As we start the new fiscal year, the assessors are in transition. June 30th is ended in terms of new growth. They're obtaining certification for new growth, and then preparations, which ultimately will come before you in a few months regarding tax classification. So, following up the board's goal and discussion previous a few months back, we brought Frank back this evening to update you on the spreadsheet he's been working on, and also, you know, discuss information that you may be seeking once we're finished Fall Town meeting and everything is certified, that when they come in for the classification hearing in the November timeframe.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. The spreadsheet here is something that is somewhat familiar to you, probably. This is a takeoff of one of the sheets that are in the slide deck for the tax classification. And what it does is kind of shows a breakdown of the residential, commercial, industrial, personal property, their levy share, and then the, what's highlighted in yellow, I think you have the Excel spreadsheet that's interactive. And that's the top section there is, the actuals from last year, from fiscal '22. Below is sort of a very early, very early projection of what we might be looking at for '23. And once again, that cell highlighted in yellow is interactive. And I think, Ken, you may recall that we talked about this once or twice, of maybe, like some, a handful of communities, maybe four or five communities, sort of set a target, if you will, of what they would want the residential rate to be, to continually match that. This would be a plug, so if you wanted, in this case, roughly, to retain kind of eighty percent of the split, you could plug that number in, and then, and the bottom shows, the bottom section there on the levy, where it's highlighted in gray, kind of shows what that would take. It would take a shift of roughly 123. That's the intent of this spreadsheet, to continually make it interactive, as to how you might want to see that play out.
So, so if we were gonna target eighty percent, you put the eighty percent in the yellow portion?
That's right. Exactly.
Because I don't, I, we just got a snapshot, we didn't get an interactive.
Okay. Oh, you didn't get the Excel? I'll get the two.
No.
So it's, and it's, we'd have to go up to 1.23 from 1.2?
Well, if these numbers are accurate, then I'm projecting, right.
Yep.
What are these different sections, this top and the mid?
Which section, I'm sorry?
Well, there's the, the top section, right, where?
I have, well, I have the different rates that would be applied, and I have different examples, 300,000, 400,000, and then what was the average last year of $496,000, what those taxes would be. And down below, the same sort of thing, with the, with the exception of roughly a 546, typical assess value that we might be looking at.
Okay, but what's, what's this top section where it says residential five, 5.6 million, billion, whatever that is?
Five point, that's, the total value for the town last year on the residential was 5.68.
That's last year?
That's last year, sorry.
Okay.
Fiscal '22. This year, I, I'm assuming, I'm probably more confident in the residential section in terms of what the increase would be, in terms of the market, and that I incorporated a 10% increase. And for the others, a somewhat more modest increase for the commercial, industrial, and the personal property, closer to four or five percent, I assume.
Frank, did you say you'll follow along the?
I'll follow along the Excel spreadsheet.
That always helps.
Yep, it'll be identical to this, yep.
So, Frank, you mentioned when other, other towns will like, if, if they have a split rate, they pick, they'll often pick a residential factor that they wanna maintain. Do they have a rationale for maintaining a split rate?
Probably varies from town to town. I think this is, when they do this, in my limited conversations with assessors, it's political. They just simply, they don't assign a real rationale other than to say that retaining, in say, an 80/20 split was something that worked fairly well for them. They really don't elaborate too much what the rationale might be.
Okay.
I could do more with the spreadsheet if you'd like.
Any other questions on the spreadsheet?
I limited it to, you recall, this is a spreadsheet, a takeoff of the spreadsheet. Very busy spreadsheet, you may recall. It dominates the page, it goes 1 through 50. It's really something you have to have in front of you in order to really make the vote, because it has every percent, 1 through 50. It's a busy spreadsheet, I, I fully understand that, but for the purposes of this, I just kept it simple to this. But it could certainly spread out to all 50 if you'd like.
Okay.
But, Frank, my understanding is that if, even if we, you could play with the spreadsheet to target the rate for residential of 16.42, to get it down below.
Yes. By simply tweaking that.
But you, but you're saying value's one up 10%, so you, if you kept that at 16.42, taxes are still gonna go up, because value's one up 10%. So you can expect, if we did that, if we backed into that number, everybody's tax bill would go up 10%.
Yes.
Any more questions on that page? The next one is a discussion of maybe possible relief that might be provided to, with seniors. There are a couple of things that could be done. One of them that's been, become a little bit more popular, is a home rule petition, and it builds off of the circuit breaker tax exemption, which is offered to residents throughout the Commonwealth. It's a state D O R exemption, offered when you enter into your state income tax. And it's just the difference between your gross- the difference between your, your gross income from your state versus the property tax plus half of any water bill. Whatever the difference is between the two, if there's a difference greater than, up, in this case, in this example, I showed 1,000. I believe the cap by the state is 1,170 for the, for this calendar year. It's capped at 1,170. That's a full credit. If in the event that somebody's applying for it for the first time, typically if anybody's having, having it done by tax preparer, it shows right up if they're over 65. If, if they're doing it for the first time and they were, might have qualified for two years previously, they do have a three-year or two-year look back that they capture that money had they qualified during that timeframe. What's attractive about this one is in terms of being means tested, it's, the requirements are a little bit more, or the income and the asset are more expansive than some of the other exemptions that we offer. The income for '21 could not have exceeded 62,000, as you can see, for a single individual, 78 for head of household, 93 for married couples filing jointly. So in the income, excuse me, the ass, assessed value for homeowners principal residence is $884,000. One of the things we're seeing that is, the communities that have adopted this home rule petition tend to be relatively affluent communities, recognizing that the, some of the other exemptions offered by the municipalities, because their income and asset driven often, just aren't reaching some of the residents within those communities. So the Sudbury, Wakefield, Reading, Winchester, Harvard, and a few others have adopted this. Even some of those at $884,000 can be, though, a little bit outside. The applicant, the interesting thing about this in terms of the circuit breaker that's offered by the state, there is no, there is no asset requirement. So what communities have done is a home rule petition, again, has adopted this, used in this, and then expanded on it to allow a matching fund by the town with, if they prefer, an, an asset requirement. The asset requirement could be determined by home rule petition, so it's however it's set up, but by the select board, Board of Assessors. The language, some towns is very, very, very vague, saying nothing more than excessive assets. That's how some communities have handled it. I don't know if they, it's revisited each and every year. The town can adopt it and say, we'll, we'll offer 50% of whatever you're getting in your circuit breaker, or 100%. Or some communities have gone to 1.5 or 2, 200% or double of whatever is allowed under the circuit breaker. Once again, that part's revisited each and every year as well.
Didn't one time we had more, we had more circuit breaker money in Chesapeake than any other town?
Steve Flynn, God bless his soul, used to tell me that. So I looked at, I looked at it for the first time this year. The last year, you had a good running history. Last year, we had about 931 people who applied for and received, in various amounts, of course, but 931. It was, it was one of the leading ones.
Because of him, basically.
He was the driving force behind it, certainly, yeah.
Frank, in this policy for the means testing, what, what piece of data in that list is under the purview of the board?
That is actually, I think, completely set up by the home rule, I would think. All of it is really rescued through the select board or however it's designed. Some towns use the Board of Assessors to determine what, what the income might be or the asset might be. The income is determined, excuse me, the assets, $150,000. That could be stocks, bonds, checking account, that sort of thing.
I, I guess what I'm asking is, like, could the board say, you got to be here 20 years?
Uh, I don't think so. I think that part, maybe in a home rule petition, excuse me, that could very well be. I suppose a home rule petition is quite a bit of latitude. I haven't, I've looked at four or five communities closely, and none vary in those types of items. They, the 10 years, residency, all of those mirror the circuit breaker. Where they begin to deviate is the benefit, the amount allowed.
Okay. And then this would have to go up to the state for approval?
Town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, in the state, yeah, state legislature. But one of the things we're anticipating is the, I believe the state budget that's before the governor right now has an expansion of the state circuit breaker program. And we're waiting to see final action, which, which should happen this week. I think the governor has until the end of the week because the session ends on Sunday. So again, when we get that information, we're reported to you. One of the other things that I think we can look about perhaps as early as next meeting and maybe even talk about in our goal session is, you know, we do have some ability to expand our senior work program as well, in terms of the funding that's, that's earned under that program. Right now, we have $100,000 in exemptions under that program. And, you know, it's been seven years since we adjusted that.
Sorry, Paul, I'm not familiar with the program.
That's where, where seniors or, or a proxy provide service for the town, where, you know, we have people who work in the clerk's office, in select board office, the council on aging, highway, and other, other places. And basically, they get paid minimum wage. And then the hours that they work, usually it's up to, you know, it's up to a thousand dollars per year, then gets credited off of their third and fourth quarter tax bill. And so we're, we're looking, that, that could actually be expanded under the current state law to $1,500. Therefore, you know, we have to bring, we have to bring that back to town meeting to expand the vote of the money allowed under the overlay to fund that program as well as the program guidelines. And so again, I think it's something that we'll discuss probably as early as next month. We start thinking of fall town meeting warrant and goals for the upcoming fiscal year. So again, you can see we're having discussions. Frank and I have met at least once, twice or so the last couple of weeks, talking about this agenda item as well as some possible relief for seniors because, as he noted, you know, values are going up, which is going to create hardship in terms of the, you know, trying to deal with the tax. And I think the data that Frank shared with me last week was the median home sale price in the town of Chelmsford for the last three years was up 25%, right? And so the numbers are just staggering because we know that's not happening in the commercial market. And so therefore, it's going to affect the decision when, when we're looking at classification come this October, November.
One of the other things that I saw, we offer other, other exemptions, in which it's income and asset tested as well, 65 and older, far more modest requirements or asset and income requirements. And I looked at it, I think I was looking at it, seven or eight years ago, we had 61 participants that took advantage of that. Now, this year, we had, for fiscal '22, we had 41. And I think what it's telling us is that there are increasingly fewer people that qualify, that their, their income exceeds relatively modest requirements, which on some level is a good thing, I guess. But I think that we've expanded that as much as we can. Shortly after Paul arrived here, in conjunction with the board, we increased those limits to, to, I think, with the maximum, pulling in about as many people as we could at that time. And still, it's, it's drawing down over the last number of years.
Right. But in, in those exemptions, if you increase them, the state doesn't contribute. It's all borne locally. So again, you've got so much money you can raise in taxation to proposition two and a half. The question becomes, how much can we set aside for abatements and exemptions, you know, while remaining within the budget? And that's, that's the challenge. Because as we said earlier, if there's a thousand people, you know, or nine, nine, you know, 900 people participating in the circuit breaker program and the town wanted to give a thousand dollar credit, well, that's $900,000. So basically, what you'd have to do is you'd have to find $900,000 within the town's tax levy or budget to provide that kind of, of a benefit. So that's why you, you, you look at, you know, these programs very carefully because you don't want to overextend yourself. Generally, in some of these home rule things that you're seeing in towns like Concord and so forth, you know, you've got a dozen or so people who qualify. It's, it's not the magnitude of hundreds. And that's, but, but, but we do know in our senior work program that we provide, you know, we have, you know, almost 100 people qualify for that program. So again, if, if, the other thing that happens to that program is the minimum wage goes up every year. So the minimum wage is going to be $15 an hour, January 1st, 23. And we always index our rate of earnings to the minimum wage out of respect for the seniors who do the work. So the question then becomes, okay, so if you're, if you're now at $15 per hour, and then the question becomes, you know, what can you do under the program? But if, if you gave them, if you gave them 100 hours, then that's $1,500 they could earn. Whereas right now, we're only capping it, if we're only capping at $100,000 under the program, instead of 150, then those number of hours diminish the other way. So that, I will provide you with written documentation, you know, in the upcoming month that sort of lays out the options and really want your thoughts and feedback in terms of which direction do we go, or, you know, on a combination of things, as well as information on what the state is doing under, you know, its efforts to provide senior circuit breaker tax relief as well. Because we know it's a very important issue with, you know, because as Fred, sorry, Frank said, our, our average tax bill this year is going to go over $8,000 because it was 78 last year and just, but, you know, so that's why we, we're very mindful of that.
Are there any more questions on this?
All very helpful, though.
Yeah, I guess the, I'd like to also just ask, is there any other information that we want to look at between now and November as we decide, like, what is our, our tax classification strategy going forward? And I went back, Paul, and looked at my notes from the May 9th meeting. Mark had also brought up, what are the, what numbers do we have in the budget that are specifically allocated toward businesses? Did I ask that the right way?
Yep.
So I don't know if that's something that you could look at in terms of departments or, you know, that serve businesses or other expenditures that serve the business community? And then Ken, you were the one that had raised, how do other towns utilize the classification? So have you gotten what you are going to get from that?
Well, I think Frank summed it up. He said there's only really a handful that do it that way, right?
Right. Tukspri, I think, I'll reach out to my colleague in Tukspri. I think she had done it for some time. See if maybe.
And I guess part of my curiosity was too, the ones that do classification, it's, or, or do a split rate, have a much higher ratio. So like, I just, I don't know if it's relevant, but I don't understand how they got to that point or why they stay there.
I also want to offer the.
I think I've seen, you just want to reduce the.
It just happened.
Once you do it, you have to creep it.
Right.
Yeah.
So you get, you're going to get there if your goal is to, because you can't, undoing it is very painful. I mean, you could look at that spreadsheet in your head, do some quick calculations. If you, if you want to come off the, the 20% shift, you, it's, it's a double whammy, especially when you get property values going up a 10%. Now, it's brutal.
Yep.
The slide deck, it's, it's, I know it's gotten longer. It is, there have been slide data to it over the years from prior select board members that they, you may find less helpful or repetitive. By all means, I welcome any, any thoughts on that. If you want to pull them off, add something else, by all means, look.
Okay.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
So Paul, it sounds like we're going to have a couple more conversations about this before November with the additional data that we talked about tonight. So I think we're at the warrant for the September 6th election?
Yeah, you have in your folder before you the warrant for the state primary election on September 6th. And so the board needs to follow the act to approve the warrant as presented. Obviously, it's prepared by the state, and there's really no local discretion here.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant for the Tuesday, September 6th, 2022 election as presented.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
And then related to that is the, as you have a memo from the town clerk in your packet this evening. And last month, the legislature and the governor signed the election reform law, which, you know, basically sort of made permanent some of the changes that were, occurred during the pandemic. And in addition, they also provided the provision regarding the assignment of police officers to polling locations in order to provide security at polling locations. As, and you see the excerpt of the law there, that the select board shall detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each building that contains the polling place for one or more precincts in order to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws related to elections. So the request is, is for one, which is basically to vote the practice that's been in place. And you can see it's endorsed by Chief Finney. But one police officer during early voting hours, which takes place in this building, on voting day, there will be three police officers, as been the case at McCarthy Middle School, one officer at the senior center, and then one officer in the polling place at the gymnasium of this building. But you're required to formally vote this at this time under the Votes Act that was established last month.
So the vote is to approve the policing of it?
Yes. Yeah, the, the, to, yeah, exactly.
The election date police detail.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the election date police detail as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
And then the next item that you have from the town clerk is the appointment of election workers. I know there was a technical correction, you know, on some of that earlier today. But basically, the, the list is presented with input from the Republican Democratic Town Committees before you this evening.
Any questions?
Do we have to?
You have to vote to appoint the election workers as presented.
So I'll make a motion to approve the election board as presented.
Second.
The election workers?
No, the election workers as presented.
And, go ahead.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0.
Thank you.
Yep. Next up, we have the town accountant. FY '22 review. Sure, set up front or come up? My notes. So I, I thought what I would do is, through each section, I'll just kind of summarize what I see, and then we can go around the table, see if anybody wants to add anything. Is that, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. So, thanks for coming, Darlene. I'm going to start with the Section 1, the FY '22 goals and objectives. The first goal was to investigate alternatives or improvements in management of administrative accounting and information flows. And I, I think in general, the board acknowledges the good work that you did in that area, both from the standpoint of working on improvements within the accounting office, working with the finance director and the town manager and other departments for improvements across the government operations. Does anyone have, I want to just go around Mark, anything to add?
No.
George? Ken? Pat? Okay. The second one was to participate in professional finance management programs and organizations to stay on top of current developments. And again, I think the board generally agrees that you've absolutely stayed on top of this area, as evidenced by the guidance that you're able to give to the board, and our performance in our local audits. So I'll go around. George, you have anything to add? No? Ken? Pat? Mark? Okay. Enhance the staff training. Darlene, I think the board's been, again, satisfied in this area as well. You've done a formal training for yourself and tried to enhance the staff training as much as possible with formal training, on-the-job training, your own personal mentorship, and also working toward getting the assistant town manager on track for certification and being prepared in terms of succession planning if that's needed. So, anything to add? Ken? Pat? Mark?
No.
George? The next one was to continue to review and upgrade the financial software. Again, I think you did a nice job this year with effective management of some of the patch upgrades that had to be done with Munis. And we all recognize that you have put the planning in place to do the full Munis upgrade in fiscal '23. Anything else to add? Pat? Mark? George? Ken?
Good.
Okay. So if I go to other key performance factors, the way I would summarize the board's comments, Darlene, is that we view you as a critical member of the finance team. I think you're somebody that we rely on. You're our go-to person when, when we need advice and input. And I know I personally appreciate the breadth and depth that you bring to the position and how you apply your knowledge and that breadth and depth in the. and how you apply your knowledge and that breadth and depth in the position.
Thank you.
So I'll go around one more time. Mark? George?
I'm good.
And Pat?
It's good.
Okay. The next section is the overall performance rating. And I put with the... We had three consistently exceeds, one exceptional, and one meets. So we need to decide on what the rating would be. Any thoughts?
A motion, or you want to...
Do you want to say what you want to motion?
Well, I mean, if... I think if you average it out, you've got to consistently exceeds.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Very good.
Yeah.
Excellent job.
The math hitting me strong there.
Why don't we do that, then?
I'll make a motion to give the town accountant an overall performance evaluation of consistently exceeds expected level of performance.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The next section is goals and objectives. So what I did was I put the goals and objectives that Darlene suggested, and then I added the comments that the board gave me during the review process. And what I'm going to ask is that you skip to page 6, which is where I just combined all that, and I had Darlene look at it before I put it in there, with the exception of me messing up the numbering system, and it should be 1 to 5 instead of 2 to 6.
I need my math.
The changes that were made were I fixed a couple of typos. I swapped Goal 1 out for what I had recommended, just modifying some of the parameters around watching the health of the ARPA projects and the expectation that we're going to do monthly reporting upfront. And then I added, what should be objective 5, not 6, in terms of conversion of the upgrade to Munis with the suggestions that Darlene gave me. Are there any suggestions or questions, or... Darlene, are you okay with...
Yep. I just had a question about the goal live date. It's going to be in April '23.
What's that?
The goal live date for the next version of Munis will be? I'm hoping April. You have 20... Okay, and you're going to start that? 20 and 23. We're already kind of starting the process. I feel like we should... I want to do payroll first. I almost have to do payroll first because they're not going to support the system. Then the version of one right now is not going to support the W-2 process, so that's critical. I have to get W-2s out to employees at the end of the fiscal year. So we're going to roll out payroll first, then we'll just go over to the general ledger and procurement and that piece of it after, because those pieces, I'll still be able to run everything I need to do in the version that we're in, but I'll need to, like, kind of get over to that, bridge over to the new payroll system for that. I guess that's good that you can do it piece by piece rather than have to be a massive one. In that way, we can. We'll be running parallels for a while anyways, but we're already starting to work with Munis' conversion team. We've had some phone calls with them to convert over some of the payroll information, getting moved over to that. Okay, thanks.
Do we vote to accept the goals? No?
No, I don't think we did.
No.
You accept the goals?
Yes.
And then, on the last section, the training and development plan. I think, in general, everyone agreed with what you had there. We had a couple of us made a note that if there's anything relevant to the new Munis system upgrade, you know, we'd like you to work on that.
Yeah, we'll reach out to Munis, for sure, for training and anything like that that we need, for sure.
Okay, any other comments, Mark? George? Ken?
So thank you for all your work this year.
Job.
Well, I appreciate it. I really appreciate everybody's support and your kind words on this evaluation. And I also just want to publicly thank my staff, because I can't do all of this without them. So I really do want to just... I really appreciate their hard work and their dedication, especially over the last few years. My office is one of those, we've had to be there, and we have to get payroll out the door. We have to pay bills. It was hard to do that remotely. So when people were not feeling well, or we were shut down, we would just have... Payroll would come, because we do a bi-weekly payroll, but we have to do a warrant every week. So we would just kind of rotate the people in and out of the office so that people weren't in the office together, but we could still get payroll physically out the door to employees and then be able to pay a warrant every week to get bills paid for the town. I mean, we are the, kind of, the engine for that, that we need to really bring in the cash and get the bills out the door. So I really want to... My staff did that. They really run the day-to-day operations, and I really appreciate it of them. So I really want to just make a public thank you to them for their hard work.
I think on behalf of the board, we also thank your staff.
Thank you.
So the next piece is the fiscal year '23 compensation.
You just want to... Can I make a motion out of the... To go to the next step? Because she was grade 9, step 7?
Yes.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I'll make a motion to increase Darlene's current level in step from grade 9, step 7, to grade 9, step 8?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Thank you, Darlene.
I'm ready. Thank you so much.
Yep. Okay, next up, we have the town manager performance review. And I'm just going to do the same thing, just go through section by section and go around and see if the board wants to add anything. Okay, so the first section is the relations with governing body. My takeaway on this, Paul, was that the board generally feels that you're keeping us informed and staying up to date on public policy. We had some inputs about working together towards maybe being a little... Getting ourselves so that we're less reactionary and a little bit more ahead of things. And, again, looking for being part of the pros and cons analyses and having some of that laid out. Anybody want to add anything? I'll go around. Mark?
No.
George?
No.
Ken? And Pat? Okay. The next one was the relations... Fiscal management, excuse me, organizational relations and fiscal management. And I can think, Paul, this was generally very strong. I think the board feels you've done a good job with the financials. There seems to be this recurring theme that keeps coming up, and I commented on that, and as did a couple others, about early visibility or being part of having a little bit more input into the process. So my feeling is we need to define more, what does that look like in fiscal '23, and see how we work toward that, because it's come up a couple times, and I think we need a common understanding of what that looks like. But generally, I think it was, you know, positive. I think we have the deficit that's projected in the five-year plan that I think we're just going to have to work on as a board, and I had talked to you about that. And we had a couple folks here, other places, comment about the ARPA funds and just feeling a little surprised by the... That we were behind on the procurement processes and the staffing issues we were having, plus the overrun that's projected. Any other comments? George?
Oh, I think you've done a good job.
Ken? Pat? And Mark?
No.
Okay. The next section was personnel management. I think, Paul, everybody... I believe we unanimously agree you've made some really strong hires this year, and I think you and your staff have done a good job hiring people in an extremely competitive environment. There are some concerns about the turnover and whether that's just related to the external environment or if there may be some other organizational culture or other organizational issues that we need to look at. And I think, you know, in general, we have very committed employees, and I think that's a good thing. So I'm just going to go around again. Ken? Start a different space. Pat? Mark?
No.
And George?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry.
It's my fault.
Is everybody?
No, that's my... Yeah, it's just...
Okay.
Whatever.
All right, that's all right. So the next section is Category 2, Section C, managing the organization. So I'm right here now? Pat, Paul, I'm sorry, too many Ps. My take on this is, in general, the board thinks that you're very strong in terms of the policy execution and adapting to situations that arise unexpectedly and on using the strengths of your staff. Maybe some opportunities that we could work on together with the board. There's still a little bit of feeling about openness in terms of new ideas or taking some of the difficult things head-on. And I made a comment here and other places that I'll just share with the board about the legislative part. I think we've done very well with earmarks and plus-ups. I also feel like it's been very reactionary, and I think even as a board, we haven't supported the relationships with our legislators in that process. And I feel that it's something that maybe we want to consider working on jointly with Paul. And I know some of our legislators have fed back to me that they don't always feel included because we've fallen into a pattern where we tend to work with one or two. And we have a real opportunity to refresh that, especially with the elections coming forward. I'll go around again. Pat, we're starting with you this time. Mark?
No.
George? Ken? Okay. Relations with the public, category 3. Paul, I think we all recognize the amount of time that you put in with other boards and committees and with community events. Some comments regarding just kind of the balance of attributing to the board or others and sharing in the responsibility. And I can't speak... There were some comments about areas for improvement with relations to the public, but I would need the people who made those comments to speak directly to that. I'll go around again. Mark, do you have anything to add?
No.
George?
I did make a comment on this one. I could hear you. I'm sorry. And my comment was in regard to three or four people who said they've called and never got a return phone call. I found that hard to believe. But I'm just sad, that's all. I'd ask for that.
Ken?
Nothing else?
Yep. George, maybe you could give Paul the specifics offline? So, okay.
I think it's more about the truck driver and stuff like that, and they called. I don't think they got him directly. They got somebody else, and they said, "Get back to me."
Okay.
It's more about, you know, Ledros, Main Street, like the rest of us get all the time.
Relations with other governments and agencies. Again, Paul, I think, generally, this was a very strong area. I know I appreciate what you do and what your staff does to bring benefit to the town through the relationships that we have with our government agencies and also with some of the other municipalities and the cooperation that we've had there. So I'll go around again. Mark? George?
I blame a lot of our legislators. I think, you know, we got a few that just don't give us any time at all. I mean, I think there should be more balance with them. We should have them in here. But what, do they want to help us or not? I don't know.
Ken? And Pat?
I would just suggest, maybe if Paul wants to talk about some of these things, too, you know, since you're asking us.
Sure, we're at the goals section, so, Paul, would you like to... I'm sorry, I could... I was just doing the same pattern I did with Darlene.
I've got a statement that I'll read, and to make it clear, Pat wasn't aware that I have this statement because I think it speaks to some of the concerns, because, Virginia, you've been very diplomatic in addressing the review, and I thank you for that. But this is going to be a permanent record, and it appears it's going to be adopted as presented, so I do have a statement. Fiscal year 2022 was a challenging, productive, and successful year. I want to thank my department heads and the town employees and volunteers for all their efforts. The town of Chelmsford was well-run. The town departments pulled together as a team to address the select board's objectives and the other needs of the public. During the course of the past fiscal year, there were at least two boards, two select board meetings per month, approximately 250 workdays, numerous other town meeting sessions and other boards and committee meetings, and countless email and other communications. None of us were perfect. I was not perfect, but I strived every day to serve the Chelmsford community. A year ago, at my last annual performance appraisal, I requested to the select board members that, when an issue arises, to bring it to my attention in a timely manner. I was surprised and disappointed to read some of the scores and comments that were submitted in my performance appraisal. Many are without specificity or evidence to justify the comment or ranking as being reflective of my performance during the entire past fiscal year. For example, two members scored me with ranking a 2, which is below meets expectations in providing information on an equal basis to all selectman... Select board members, sorry. I scored myself a 5 because I respect the position that each member holds on the select board. I strive to provide information to each of you in a timely manner and on an equal basis. Almost always, this occurred via an email to the entire board. I did not have favored members that received exclusive or advance information. I'm most disappointed by the portion of the performance appraisal pertaining to personnel management. Some of the comments may be perceived as disparaging the quality of the town's government and its employees. During this past COVID-19 pandemic society that has been characterized as the Great Resignation, there have been some employee turnover. However, the selection, recruitment, and retention of personnel has been strong. I am proud of and confident in the ability of the town's recent hires. New and existing employees have been encouraged to develop skills. The department heads and I treated employees in a fair and equitable manner. In this inflationary environment, where there has been a shortage of workers, employees often left because they could earn significantly more money in the private sector or in another community. Finally, if there were issues with relations to the public during the past year, I would like to be made aware of them. I believe that I answered almost all citizen calls and responded to their emails. I also acted to recognize the role and responsibility of the select board. I am not aware of instances where I minimally directed credit to the select board while upset that I did not get more credit. I am not aware of any inappropriate commentary being made on Facebook, and I certainly do not have favored reporters, because there are essentially no reporters covering Chelmsford. When I read such comments, I feel that it may be part of an ongoing deliberate effort by some to damage me, my reputation, and my career. I respect and request that unsubstantiated, unwarranted comments be removed from my performance appraisal prior to its adoption as a document that is endorsed by a majority vote of the select board. Chelmsford does not have a mayoral form of government like Boston. I serve as town manager under an elected select board and with a representative town meeting form of government. Almost all the goals during the past year were shared select board and town manager goals. I look forward to working with the select board to establish and achieve new goals to serve the community in this new fiscal year. And I have copies of this for you and also one that I would like to be submitted in the record with the performance appraisal that's voted. Thank you.
I think that's just extra. Should I close on the goals part, and then we'll go back to Paul's comments? Should I close on the goals part and then we'll go back to Paul's comments and everything Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just try to step through these quickly. I think on the sewer capacity, Paul, in general, I think there's agreement that the goal as stated was met and we all know that we have a lot of work left to do. I know, well, I've made comments here and in a couple others where I feel that we've had past recommendations or past documentation that we need to make a more conscious effort at looking at and dispositioning because I'm still left wondering with this and with something like the road pavement, like how did we get there from here? And I think it's important to understand that. And I will just also own up right now, I made comments on this and a couple others that I feel that these were really important goals and we fell a year behind because we just, they weren't addressed last year. And I don't feel that the reason for not addressing them last year was COVID. We pushed and pushed and we didn't address them, so I'm glad that we moved the ball forward this year. On sewer capacity again, I think that we got the sewer capacity report, I agree with you, in a timely manner from Weston and Sampson. I won't say anymore, there's still a lot left to do that we've got to do and there's some other comments there from board members. So, Mark?
No, I think my comments that I wrote stand.
Okay. George?
No, just said, it was on my mind, I nearly read half of them, so.
Okay.
Good.
Pat? All right. Sewer lessons learned, I think this is just, this one is, we did get the document from you, Paul, the one-pager on the root cause. I am, I'm glad that we could acknowledge that part of the root cause was that we had some process issues and things that we faltered on over the last few years. So I think the recommendations that had been brought forward and some of the applications of those lessons learned, I feel are strong and I think some other board members do too by what they wrote. So with that, I'll just go around. George? Ken? Oh, sorry.
Oh, I put down what I felt and what I answered the best, what I could do and that's it.
Okay. Pat? Anything else? Mark, anything else? The Warren Pole Farm, I know that's been a hard push, so hopefully we'll get that closed this year. Ken, do you want to add anything?
On Warren Pole?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Pat?
No.
Mark? George? Do you want to add anything? The fire stations, that committee has kicked off and I think, Paul, thank you for rolling up your sleeves and engaging with the committee. The PFAS on Richardson Road, I'm sorry, I should go around. Mark? George? Ken? Pat? Okay. Richardson Road, I think that the, everyone would agree, working with our LSP, they did a really nice job, and your staff, Paul, of responding to the DEP action plan. We all know there's still more to do there, but it was quite an effort to get the response to that in place and get the system up and running. So thank you and your staff for that. Mark?
No.
I'm going to skip George because he recused. Ken?
No.
And Pat? Okay. The ARPA funds, so Paul, I think that, you know, you did as wide a reach as anyone could have done in terms of soliciting the proposals for the ARPA funds. There were some board members that were a little bit surprised when we asked for the status report, but I think we're on a track for course correction there. And I appreciate the input that you and Darlene and John Souza have provided to that process to help the decision process. So I'll go around again. Ken?
I'm also.
Pat? Mark? And George? The COVID recurrence preparation, you know, your emergency response and the Board of Health are on that and we know you've been supporting that as well. I'll just ask anything else on that one, that was a pretty straightforward one. In resident communications, I think the newsletter is a good add. I think it provides some good and comprehensive information to the public. I know Chelmsford Telemedia and some of your staff, Paul, as well as you, you know, are out there on social media and also in the productions that Telemedia makes to try to help inform the public. I appreciate that as well. There was at least one comment about the website page, and I'm going to let you address that. So why don't we go around? George, any comments? Ken?
Yeah, the only comment there I made was about the search. Seems to really be a sticking point for a lot of people. We discussed that, but.
Okay. Pat?
I'll say.
And Mark? The minutes process, this was mostly a select board goal, but I do want to acknowledge from where I sit, watching Mark lead that process for the select board, I think that there were members of your staff, Paul, you know, Christina and Tricia, that really helped and contributed to that along with Attorney Haverty and yourself. And I know you've taken on the role of releasing our minutes compliance and making sure that that happens. And Tricia just sent out the committee-wide acknowledgement, so I appreciate that as well. Any other comments on the minutes policy? The public works infrastructure, we had three different objectives, so I'll just take them one at a time. The transportation infrastructure and the listening sessions. I know we addressed this as a board, Ken and I helped work some of the responses offline to bring to the board with your staff, Paul, and that was, I just want to recognize, that was really a huge undertaking. There were a lot of comments and, you know, four pages worth of spreadsheet, to the point that some folks made we still have work to do in terms of ledge road and other truck traffic issues in town. And I wish there was a faster solution. The road infrastructure improvements, I think everybody acknowledges that we had the plan, the five-year plan put in place that we reviewed. Some folks were a little surprised that we had had recommendations in 2010 and we weren't able to figure out a way to do something other than level fund. And then the last one on the DEP consent order for the Southwell Pump Station, that was all completed satisfactorily and compliant with what DEP wanted. Anything else to add? Ken? Pat? Mark? And George? Okay. The cybersecurity vigilance, we did have the sessions, an executive session with Ted Lutter. Unless somebody wants to talk more about that, I'm going to keep going. And then the succession planning, I think finding the grant money and to do that was a really good add for the town. And I think when we had the briefing, you know, Mark mentioned there's still more to do into fiscal '23, what do we do with the recommendations? But that was a good milestone to complete. The town common, anybody else on succession planning? Okay, the town common and its extensions, we did have the listening session and that's a topic later tonight to talk about the path forward there. And then in the last section, some of us chose to write some summary comments and others didn't, but I'll just try to summarize as best I can. Paul, thank you for the list of other notable accomplishments. I wrote in my comments that I agree with them. And Pat made some comments about your effectiveness as the town manager. I feel that we accomplished all of our goals. I don't feel that it was all Rosie getting there and I've stated why. And I think kind of going forward, you know, we've got some real priorities we've got to, we're going to address in fiscal '23 at our work session next week. But I listed some other ideas that I had there in terms of things that I think we need to continue to work on. So I'll go, any closing comments, Mark?
No.
George?
No.
Ken?
No.
And Pat? I didn't want to speak for you, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'd just kind of reiterate, you know, my support for Paul. I think he's accessible and accountable and responsive to all our requests and questions we have for him. I think we're fortunate to have him. I think so many things in the past year or past two years really have been things that he couldn't control that maybe affected some of the ways that the goals and other things were handled, such as inflation and COVID. And I think we need to realize that. You know, I'm glad we have him as our town manager. He works, he goes outside the parameters of his job to improve the environment in Chelmsford and to really deal with other communities, other agencies, other organizations so that he can make Chelmsford a better town and is not afraid to put in the legwork that that takes.
Thank you, Pat. Before we go to the rating, I'd like to just go back to the statement that Paul read, if that's okay? I have two questions. One, is there any general response that board members would like to provide? And I want to address the specific request about striking comments from the performance appraisal, but first, are there any general statements anyone would like to make?
Yeah, I have one. I can make a, certainly make a comment to Paul's statements regarding getting the input on issues as they arise throughout the year so that if people do have concerns, questions, et cetera, that they bring those to him in real time and not wait till the 12-month process to, you know, bring out those kinds of issues because at that point, many times the details still aren't there, you know, you don't recall everything and so forth. And I can tell you as someone that does that, that I've had nothing but good success with that. And they weren't always great discussions, but they were real discussions and they were sometimes in real time, minutes after the words came out, we had discussions about it so that he knows what I heard and how I heard it and I understand what he was trying to say and how he said it. And I think that those are really important discussions to have and I think they only lead to positive outcomes and they have during the course of this year for me.
I want to go to the request because I don't want to leave that unaddressed. All rights, I request that unsubstantiated and unwarranted comments be removed from my appraisal prior to its adoption as a document that is endorsed by a majority vote of the select board. I don't know, Paul, I don't know how to address that unless you tell us specifically what comments they are. So I don't know if we need to go back and have you identify those and come back and talk about them or you talk to the people who made them and then we come back and talk about them?
I mean, I will say identified two of mine, well, at least two of mine, but if he wants them struck, I don't have a problem striking two of them.
Yeah, I don't know what the board's intent is. Is the board to just keep everybody's comments as part of the record and then just vote the document and then vote on a final score? Or is the, or will there be some, a vote or a review saying that this is the consensus of the board on either side of an issue? I think what strikes me, you know.
Excuse me, Paul. The only way I can put this document together is the way it's put together.
No, no.
And I can't go through that process on my own.
No, but I didn't know what, I didn't know where you're going from here. In other words, the board.
Well, usually, typically in my understanding from history and observing history is the board adopts the document after it's put together like this. If you have an issue with how, with what's in there, then it has to be addressed as part of the process and come back to a public meeting, I think. So I would, I would say unless we resolve it tonight and you want to identify the specific comments and we go through each one and resolve it right now, that we take the time for you to do that and put it back on the agenda on the 8th.
It's whatever the board's preferences, I mean.
Okay, I'll stop talking unless some of the other board members.
Because this was a review for the last 12-month period, okay? And when I, and, and sitting here tonight and even in my discussions with the board members, of some of which sat with me before their appraisals were drafted and seeing them, you would think that my performance was satisfactory to the entire board. But yet when I see the proposed individual rating, two of the five board members have determined or rated that I didn't meet the board's expectations. And then when I look at that and then look at the comments that may build to that conclusion, I was, like I said earlier, I was surprised and disappointed, I guess, that, like, where do these things come from? And if they did, you know, and I don't even know if they occurred in the last year or where it's coming from. You know, I'll give you a specific example, you know, this idea that I don't provide information equally to board members. I heard it on both sides. Someone said, oh, you're providing this one with the information. Then when I spoke to the other person, they said, oh, no, you're sort of slighting me to provide more to the others. And I'm scratching my head saying, you know, you're kidding me. And then can you cite, you know, can we have examples? Because as I said, this is a public document, it's out there, you know, people are going to pull comments from it there, you know, there, you know, because we know from past experience, there's going to be probably news accounts written by it. And I just think that, you know, there ought to be a basis and support for when someone provides something that seems to be out of line with the majority or most of the other board members. And I think that's puzzling to me. And I understand everybody has their own perspective and their own idea of what expectations are and so forth. But like I said, I see some of this stuff and it's just like, it's like, did I do any good in that person's eyes? Because, you know, you just see a consistent pattern of twos and threes and some ones and maybe one-four. And it just, you know, and then you come to the conclusion and at the end of the day, you know, there's, as I said earlier, there's two members who say, oh, you don't meet the expectations of the position, which I don't think anybody who watched this discussion this evening or, or, you know, watched the board meetings in the last year would have that impression. And I think that's what unsettles me. And as I said earlier, I'm trying my darndest to serve this community and to serve the board as manager. And at the end of this year, you saw my self-evaluation. I thought this was a good year. I graded myself a four. And to see, it looks like the consensus is three, which I can live with, but to see that members of the board are at the twos, because, and to see some of the comments is like, well, when did that happen? When did these things happen? And it hurts because I and my staff, I see the work that they put in and the department has, everyone else. I mean, and I come to these meetings and everything else and I don't recall issues like what residents saying, hey, we've been mistreated by the board or the, you know, or we're not getting any feedback and so forth. And I said, we're not perfect, but this is supposed to be a, you know, a summary of what transpires over 12 months. It shouldn't be, oh, well, we had a couple incidents or a couple occurrences over a year period and then that becomes the basis for, you know, a below. year period, and then that becomes the basis for, you know, a below-expectation rating. And it just, it just, like I said, disappoints me, and some of them, I think, are just hurtful. I'd like to know when I sat there and got upset that I didn't get enough credit and that, you know, I basically minimized the board. Every ribbon-cutting I go to, for one example, I sit there and acknowledge the select board. Whenever I'm at a town meeting or whatever, or any, or other boarding commissions, I'm constantly putting forward the board, you know, as the board, you know, the board's done this, or the board's looking to this. I'm always promoting the board and the community, even at town meeting. When I tripped up on the matter with the sidewalks, I was trying to direct the board as to want, hey, you've got a concern, you bring it to the select board. It wasn't, hey, come see me, I'll take care of it, you know, and marginalize the select board. I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I heard the concerns a year ago, I tried consciously to improve and to work upon them and to address them, and then to come a year later without any sort of indications of, you know, feedback along the way and then just get whacked again with some comments. It's hurtful and I can, and, and I also think it's inaccurate. And I guess I'm just trying to express that to the board, and I'll stop at that point.
Paul, you know, you made the comment about the town meeting with the sidewalks. And maybe my perception is often that, it didn't come across as if you have a problem, well, if you see the select board, they'll solve it. It was more, you've got a problem with no sidewalks, that's not me, that's the board's complaint.
And I, and I shared with you that I got accosted after that meeting, people yelling at me because I'm on the select board, and I decided there weren't going to be any sidewalks.
And as I said, I tripped up on it, but my intent was, and I explained this to the board, was the intent was, hey, this is the select board that's had multiple traffic listening sessions, you know, and we have monthly traffic safety committee reports to this select board. If you have a concern on sidewalks or traffic or safety, bring it to the select board because that way they're overseeing me and my staff.
Respectfully, Paul, respectfully, Paul, what you said was, by the select board's direction, there will be no more sidewalks. That's not the message that you're conveying today.
And I said that, and I tripped up that, I agree with that.
And so I think, I know, I know when I made comments like that, it's about, it's about the messaging and how that comes across. And, you know, I, I've given examples with you one-on-one and the results that it's had. So for me, it's about, it's about the messaging and sometimes using the word "I." Not the select board's going to do this, but I am going to present this to the select board as an option, you know, especially in cases where we haven't even had a chance to talk about it as a board. So those were, when I made comments about overattributing to the board or not having that balance, those were, that's where I was coming from. I think some of the other comments from board members were a little stronger, so I'll let, I'll let you guys comment yourselves. I don't, I just don't think the town meeting is a good example because-
As I said, it wasn't, no, it wasn't a good example, but I was trying to let you know my intent, that even in the case of the worst example, my intention was not to, you know, disparage or diminish or otherwise, you know, negatively reflect upon the board. It was, it was instead, when I, when I went up there-
And that's what happened.
Yeah, I know what happened, but I'm just saying is, and I couldn't think of other examples, quite frankly, or I would have brought them up, but I just was trying to give an example, but, you know, again, that's one issue, but.
I mean, I think, I think it might be more helpful for Paul to meet individually with with the members here that maybe he has an issue with, rather than shine a lot of light on that, because if we do that, then I think that's all we're going to hear is, you know, the negative things that we couldn't come to an agreement on. That would be just my suggestion.
I think we're trying not to do that.
I understand, but I think, you know, I think Paul's looking for some-
And by the same token, Paul, I, I think if, if there are, if there are board members that have, have issues, I don't want to diminish that either. I want to make sure we're addressing it, and I don't want to say just because three board members gave you a three or a four, there's, let's dismiss what the other board members are saying, and I don't want to do that. If there, if there are concerns and issues, I would prefer that they get addressed. And so that's why I'm asking, you're asking for comments to be removed, and I'm not going to unilaterally do that. If there are comments that you want removed, I think you have to take that on with whatever board members made those comments, or the board has to decide we're not doing that.
And I think that's what I suggested, that he meet individually with those board members to see if, if that, what accommodation can be made, whether to remove them or not. And then we come back and look at it in full, because I don't want to make a decision about somebody else's comments about whether to remove them.
Me either, I agree with you, Pat, on that. I think you should just have discussions, which unfortunately maybe could have happened earlier in the year, but we are what we are, so deal with it now.
I don't want to characterize it that way either, because I think in some instances, people feel they had had the discussions repeatedly, so.
Well, then that's another point.
Right.
That's just another point that should be brought up.
I think that should just be taken offline, Paul, with the people who made the comments.
Okay, then that's fine.
Because I'm not, I'm not going to change this without-
Okay, that's fine, right.
The people who made the comments saying they're going to change it.
Then if that's the case, then I'd just ask you to wrap it up this evening then, and just, you know.
You don't want to sit down and go?
No, no, I'll sit down with you, but finalize the process.
What Paul's suggesting, and I, and I agree, that if this, if he wants to have discussions about the comments in the review, then it would probably make more sense to put off a rating, the discussion on rating and compensation until after we know what the review, the final review says.
Concern was this becomes his permanent record.
Right.
So, yeah, you don't, if that's the goal, we should sit and meet before we make this permanent record.
We should, I guess, table this until our next meeting?
Sure. Yep.
And can, can all of us commit if any of us have made comments Paul wants to talk to us about, to talk to him between now?
Yeah.
It has to be done in a timely manner, because if I have to change anything, I need time to do it for the edit.
That I made, on behalf of-
Are you okay with that approach, George? Pat, Mark, Ken? So the next thing on the agenda is the town center improvement listening session. Hang on, Paul, my computer fell asleep.
The board had charged select board member Dixon and me with providing a summary of the town center improvements listening session that was held back just over a month ago on June thirteenth. Having reviewed the minutes of the meeting, the video of the meeting, we present this list to the, to the board and of the items that were of note from the listening session, and then.
I guess the screen's in there, went down. But it's online on the-
It's online, yeah. But the, and then I also reference who they could be referred to for follow-up action in terms of.
I think Mrs. Clancy had a, I think she's done some research, and she's more familiar with things that have been tried in the past, and she talked about the crosswalk and stuff like that. I mean, I can remember who said everything else that night, but.
And so, George, where Paul wrote, refer to certain people to look at closer, you're in agreement with that, right? Or no?
Yeah, I read this every morning. And I told him that I would be happy to work with women.
Yep, thank you. Does the board have any comments on what's here?
No.
I remember initially when, when we brought this up, it, you know, I had, I had asked something about being able to improve the overall sound system there, and I don't know if that's, if that's something that can be done with additional outlets or, you know, like what they have at the-
Sorry, Pat, you dropped out.
Yeah.
Being able to do what?
Sound system.
The sound system on the common.
Get it closer.
The sound system.
Oh, improve the sound system?
Right, yeah, yeah, because there's so many events there, and, you know, if you, you hear it really well if you're right near whoever's doing, you know, doing a performance, but then you go on the other end of the common, and many times it's hard to hear, especially when the traffic is not blocked on North Road. I don't know how, you know, how it would really work. I know at the, at the Veterans Park, they have something set up to where, I mean, they have maybe wireless speakers or whatever that they plug in whenever they need to use them. I don't know if we could have some kind of system like that. Anyway, that was, because I think that was the initial impetus for this, and then it kind of expanded to all the other stuff.
So, so we can, can we add the sound system to the list as something to evaluate? That's what you're asking?
Correct.
Okay.
Or you don't want to install a new sound system, you want the wiring there for someone if they have a sound system, so that it's easier to use.
Whatever works, yeah, right, yeah, because, yeah, because I know if we're going to have additional electrical outlets.
So it's sound system infrastructure, it's probably more of it.
Right, something like that.
Because if someone's going to come to a concert, the town shouldn't be offering expensive speakers for them to use, but-
You're right.
The wire should be there for them to use.
Although we do have town events, what, that maybe a town sound system is useful.
When you say town, you mean?
Community band, things like that.
Right, but the community band sound system is different than, you know, like the Chelmsford TV station version, or everybody brings in their own equipment, that's the problem.
That's why I'm not sure how, I'm not sure, you know, if it would work effectively, but, you know, just something to consider.
My only comment, Paul and George, was where it says refer to a committee and somebody on staff. When that referral is done, could you please include, if you're sending an email to refer it or whatever, could you please include the select board liaison to that committee in the communication? Because I would like to see our liaisons engage in this.
Which is who?
Well, tree committee, I think that's Ken. I don't have my list with me, is that you?
Each item?
Some, some of them have committees. There was another one, Center Village Master Plan, I can't, is that you too, Ken? Or is that, is that one Mark picked up? I don't remember.
No, the Center Village Master Plan is me.
Okay, so I think those were the two. And then, you know, keeping, keeping George in the loop, so.
Trying to remember, one of the Center Village committees, I don't know if it's Historic District or Center Village meets on Monday nights, the same, a lot of times.
That's Historic District.
Okay, all right.
Anything else on the listening session follow-up? Okay, thank you. Okay, Paul, we're at bid awards.
Yeah, I have one bid award, seeking your confirmation this evening. This is for the installation of the outdoor circuit training system for the adult fitness park. It was bid, and the open was on July eighteenth. There was one bidder, which is Engineered Installation Solutions. The bid amount was an amount of $27,000. There was an issue regarding an exception, but that has since been resolved, and so all the bid documents are sufficient, and it, and our budget was $25,000 for this work and the projects that we're, we're fine to proceed. So I would formally ask the board's approval to award the contract for the outdoor circuit training system equipment installation to Engineered Installation Solutions, an amount of $27,000.
Paul, what did we estimate for this?
Twenty-five thousand, yeah.
And when would it be done?
We're trying to get it done over the next several weeks to hopefully have it open by early fall. There's the installation, then there's some artwork that goes on the walls, which has to be applied, and right now the concrete pad is curing, they want a thirty-day cure.
One week installation's impressive.
Yeah, they basically bring a crew in, is how they do it, and they just-
Have they done these before?
Yeah, they've done this, yeah, they've done these, that's why, I mean, so it's an experienced crew that they literally house, bring them in, house them, do the work, and, you know, take on it.
Any other questions? We're good. So I'll make a motion to award the installation of the outdoor circuit training system equipment to Engineered Installation Solutions in the amount of $27,000.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you.
Town manager reports?
Just a few quick items this evening. The first one is on the, as the board's aware by now, but the remote meeting and public access provisions that were provided during the pandemic were extended to March thirty-first, 2023. They had expired at the end of last week, and so there was a lot of concern because of the legislative laid action on it, but the acting governor signed the bill into law when the governor was out of state, and so it really had no lapse. And so the good news is, is we have till the next March, the end of next March, and hopefully by then the legislature will again reconvene, either extend it more or make permanent the provisions of the public access. In other words, you can continue to have these, you know, entirely remote meetings and so forth, which would not have been allowed at this lapse, so that's good news. The other thing I wanted to formally notify the board is, earlier in the past fiscal year, we had submitted a grant application in coordination with the Chelmsford Water District to deal with the COVID and watershed lane. Unfortunately, we received a response dated July thirteenth from the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Dams, Division of Ecological Restoration, that the town's application was not funded. You know, in the usual great language we have, which, you know, they appreciated our time, and they received numerous applications that well exceeded the funding amount for this project. The other matter that takes place this time of the year is, under the provision of the town charter, I provide a list of qualified officers and who can perform the duties of the town manager during my temporary absence or disability. The list this year would be Assistant Town Manager Steve Maffetone, Finance Director John Souza, and Department of Public Works Director Christine Clancy. And then, and in my absence, either Assistant Town Manager Steve Maffetone or Public Works Director Christine Clancy can sign payrolls and other vendor warrants. You know, obviously, John Souza could not do that because he's the treasurer and his name's on the checks. And then the final notice under my reports has to do with the notice we received last week from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. And under the 2021 Transportation Bond Bill, they established a municipal pavement program, which had to do with the paving of numbered state routes that were not under state control. And in this case, they informed us that the state will be performing resurfacing during this new fiscal year that started, basically all of Groton Road from the Westford Town Line to Vinyl Square, so it's Groton Road as an entirety, and then the section of North Road from the Drumhill Rotary down to basically the, the end of, yeah, right, into Vinyl Square. Yeah, basically, those two, those two sections of roadway. So basically, you've got an area of one and a half miles, which is the length of Groton Road, and then you've got just a 1.2 miles, that portion of North Road, which basically brings you from, I'm sorry, from 495 to Drumhill, I'm sorry. So that's, I just wanted to let the board and the community, DPW is following up in terms of the information and coordination with the state on that. There is an information session next month that they'll be participating in, but that's good news in terms of, again, roadway conditions in the community. That concludes my report, and then you have some appointments under the select board, and then you have some under mine, so let's pause at this moment.
Okay, so the first one is the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee for Peter Spawn. That's a select board appointment. Any comments or not, I'll take a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve Peter Spawn to the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, five zero. Next are the town manager appointments, Paul.
Yeah, for the, seeking the board's confirmation to the appointment of Lillian Martin to the Council on Aging for an unexpired three-year term ending June thirtieth, 2023. And then I have appointments to the Parade Committee. Basically, it is the reappointment of Jeff Hardy, Paul Hardy, Deborah Haywood, Charles Marcella, Lynn Marcella, Brian Reedy, Karen Reedy, Rick Romano, and Colleen Stansfield, as well as the formal appointment of Paige Gillette and Eric Lindstad, who basically helped the committee this past year, but we're going to formally vote them in as members of the Parade Committee. So I'd take the board's, all those are one-year terms expiring July thirty-first, 2023, following next year's Fourth of July parade. So I'd ask the board's confirmation of those appointments.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the town manager's appointments as presented.
All those, all those in favor? Aye, five zero. Next up, we have the meeting minutes for June twenty- Aye, five zero. Next up, we have the meeting minutes for June 27th. Are there any amendments before I take a motion? Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the select board's regular session meeting minutes from June 27, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Next is July 11th. Are there any amendments before I take a motion? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular session minutes from July 7th, July 11th, 2022 for the select board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. I have a announcement on the determination of releaseability for executive session minutes. The minutes for June 27th, 2022, Segment 1, were deemed releaseable, and the minutes for June 27th, 2022, Segment 2, were held as not releaseable. Next up, we have liaison reports. Mark?
All set.
George?
Aye.
Ken?
I'm all set.
Pat?
Yeah, just have a couple of things. Last week, there was ribbon cutting over at Wink Lash Lounge on 7 Fletcher Street. They do, I'm sure everybody on this table is interested, they do artificial eyelashes, permanent artificial eyelashes, so you don't have to put your mascara on every morning. Reminder too, about McKay Library concerts every Wednesday through the end of August at 6:30 PM. I went to the one last week, it was really good, and there's one this week that's going to be, I'm sure, just as good, every Wednesday at McKay. And just wanted to alert the residents, especially those in the Chelmsford Water District, since that's the water district I am a liaison to, that as of August 1st, they will be, they will be updating the water restriction to Level 3, which means you can only use handheld watering and drip irrigation, so no more irrigation systems for your lawn and things like that. So, that'll begin, again, on August 1st, and I'm sure there will be a lot more information about that coming out soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat. I have a few. From the school committee, the school system has hired a new director of human services, Diane Carey, and they welcomed her on Tuesday night. The school committee will be voting on the middle school reconfiguration in August, and they also discussed the finalized five-year strategic plan and the next steps for implementation. The planning board public hearing for the 255 Princeton Street Development, which is the former UMass West Campus, opens this Wednesday, July 27th. The Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee would like everyone to know that they welcome public participation at its virtual meeting this Thursday, July 28th, at 7:00 PM, and you can see the details on the Agenda Center on the town website. I have a late-arriving flyer I'll put up on the screen, but the Age Friendly Committee has announced their first age-strong Chelmsford job fair in partnership with Mass Hire of Lowell, and they are going to have a, a job fair on Thursday, August 18th, from 10 to 1. And Employment Ventures will be setting up at 9:00 AM at the senior center, and they're going to be hosting 20 businesses that are actually exclusive to Chelmsford. So, the first hour of the job fair is for job seekers who are 50 years and older, and they will have part-time as well as full-time and volunteer positions showcased there. They're also reaching out to other partners, so if you have any questions, you can contact maryann Segoll, S-E-G-O-O-L, at masshirelowellcc.com, or in the town of Chelmsford, you can contact Lisa Maroni at lmaroni@chelmsfordma.gov. And then the only other thing is, I wanted to remind Paul and the board that we have our Goals Work Session, session, a week from tonight, so if you could prepare for that by bringing with you any ideas that you have or want to put forward for next year's goals, we'll go through and prioritize at that session.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, yes. And with that, it is 8:34 PM. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session, to review executive session meeting minutes from July 11th, and review the executive session meeting minutes for potential release for June 6th and July 11th. Do not return.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mark?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And I vote aye.